Welcome to tonight's meeting, December 18th, 2023, our last meeting of the year. Anybody have any reports? Counselor Azadi?
No, ma'am.
I do not this evening.
I went to the shops luncheon on Thursday, very nice. The Volontades, I think, did the meal very, very, very good. It was nice to meet some people over there.
I know it gets tough, but.
It's a question what?
I went to Covenant Village concert. I think it was Tuesday, the 12th. They thanked us and thanked us and thanked us for that donation that came in so they could have that. It was the Denver Brass Five and it was, I livestreamed it for a while until my hand got tired of holding the camera. But they, they were just great and it was a packed house. They also had their cameras going so anybody in the care facility or somebody that couldn't make it out could see it on their TVs. So they did not have to pay and I just bring back hundreds of thank yous. They loved it. And they also started a foundation which they were raising money for to help those who can't pay or having struggles making ends meet that are living there. And so that's the second time I've been there in a month that they're really stressing that because people are having trouble going to be staying in place because of all the costs that they're paying for inflation just in general. And so they're trying to help out by starting a foundation to help those that can't pay. I went to the victim advocate party. They're a group of volunteers in the city that have to commit for a year if they volunteer and they are on call and go with police or fire. If there's an incident, they get called up anytime of night or day and help those in need. I went to the youth advisory panel. Panel. They had 19 youth that have a million ideas and great energy and just they're always a great group to see. I had two transportation meetings back to back on the same day. So I went for the first 45 minutes to NADA, the North Area Transportation, which includes all of the cities in Adams County plus Broomfield County. And we talked about next year's, what we're going to look at for, we have too many needs and roads. We're going to need to prioritize so that might have better luck at getting money from the feds or whoever we try to get money from. And I think I sent you a report on that. I owe you a report. It's partly done on my computer from the next meeting I ran to in Broomfield for the Northwest Commissioners and Mayors Meeting, which is Boulder County mayors and then the Jefferson County folks. And then everybody from again Broomfield to Longmont to Boulder, all the little cities in between, and then us. Today I was on the chamber talk. They have that every Monday and they've been, I know Counselor Demont was there last week. If you check it out, just know the first maybe five minutes is Gabby with her face in the computer because anytime I get on a Zoom call, she thinks she needs to be seen. And so she sat there looking at herself and she wasn't sure. And I could see sort of my hairline behind her and my voice going through her. But then she finally got bored and left. The other thing is my cancer stuff is going good. I started today with some tests that we had the baseline back in June, so we have to start all of that over. So I got injected with, it might glow in the dark when I leave here because it is glow-in-the-dark stuff that I got injected with. So he said, just drink lots of liquid. I said, I know, I know. But so I did that. But last Friday I had to go in, well, no, last Thursday. Got a call Wednesday, something had canceled that I want to go in the next day I could. And I have all of the fun stuff to show for that little mess. And for those of you that have been along this journey with me, may know that in February last, this year, they really found first a heart murmur and then the cancer came up. So in between all of that, every now and then I'd get a call, well, you need an EKG. And then it'd be forever. I'd say, what doctor are you and who are you with and what am I doing this for? And then it was an echo. And then it was something else. And a few weeks ago, I had to swallow a camera so that they could see the heart. And this whole mess was angioplasty where they felt like they put yards and yards of tubing in you to go check everything. And so December 26th, I'm going to be having open heart surgery. And it's a good time because I have two weeks to start to recover before we come back to normal stuff. And I know if you see me hitchhiking, it's because I can't drive for four weeks, but it doesn't mean I can't leave the house. So anyway, so that brings you up to date with me.
Questions for tonight's agenda? Yes, ma'am.
I just had a couple of questions on the reports. For sustainability. I was curious to know, we, we talked about just having more uptake, a ton of great uptake with the businesses with respect to, you know, helping them on all different fronts to be more sustainable. But I'm curious to know, do we have numbers on how many of them utilize recycling and composting and how that relates to what type of business, like restaurants versus other businesses? Just curious.
Could you introduce yourself? Yeah, and then have a seat, please.
Yes. Hi, I'm Bridger Tomlin, Sustainability Administrator. Thank you for the question, Pro Tem Normella. We have data on kind of what that business is willing to show us. Out of the 275 to 300 businesses that have participated in the program, from just kind of the top of my head, I would say most of the businesses that we have data on recycling rates, what type of recycling would be, restaurants are pretty high and business or like commercial large office centers have recycling. However, a lot of that data is not 100% complete, just given what businesses are able to share us during interactions.
I'd just be curious to know in the future if there's a way we can get a baseline number and just know how well we're doing and have some, you know, some consistent measures over time. Because it's hard to tell when we're just talking about all these, this many businesses are participating in the Sage Program versus what are they doing? Do we have things that we're trying to get them to do more than others? So that would be maybe, or you know, if you already have that and maybe that's something you can just add into those updates. Thank you. Then my other questions were on the strategic plan update. And just, I love the fact that we have a, you know, that table that shows us all of the, you know, the status of all the different projects. A lot of them said that for the year they're complete, but it would be helpful as we go into the strategic plan to flag the ones that we know are kind of an annual thing that we want to keep tabs on. So that would be one component. Because as I was going through, I was starting to write down, oh, this doesn't seem like it's complete, but I think there's a lot of them. So just kind of going through it and flagging it. And I had a question about the adaptive, the redevelopment kit. What are we calling it? No, the redevelopment toolkit. The, we said it's complete, but I thought we had, you know, some need for dollars to actually implement that.
Hi, Lindsay Kimble, Economic Development Director. Thank you for the question, Mayor Pro Tem. So what that signifies is that the toolkit document was completed in that year. And certainly we have many, many years ahead of us of implementation and we're working on milestones and KPIs for each year in that process as well.
Okay, so that's probably just another one of those iterative.
Yes, yes.
Okay, this year we're going to hit this.
Correct.
And then a question I had about the events. I'm torturing each person. The events that we, we do, we talk about just trying to locate them equitably throughout the city. And so all I was wondering was if we had those mapped or some type of list of those events with a map?
Yes. Good evening, Tomassurad Mishler, Director, Parks, Recreation and Libraries. And yeah, we have them mapped with G P, G I S, and we also have lists of where they're located throughout the city.
Okay, that would be good to have. Just, you know, we have the, we have the table and it's helpful. But in some of them, there are specific measures and percentages that we're trying to hit. And maybe in the next iteration of how we report out on the strategic plan, we think about how to get some of those details. I think it could also be helpful to, you know, if we have a plan or a strategic plan webpage or something that there's maybe a little more interactiveness on some of those measures that we have. It's not just for, for parks and rec, but it's for just our overall measures and maybe working towards something like a Power BI dashboard or something that could interplay all of the measures that we consistently track that we're finding as we go through this process. So I'm totally, this is just, you know, spaghetti on the wall thought about how, how do we just continue to improve upon our reporting and make it a little more understandable for everybody else to.
We are looking with Open Gov is our new platform. Erin Fariter, interim policy and budget administrator, to try and track and have a more interactive way to, to monitor those performance measures. So we're kind of tracking same thing, same thought pattern.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. All right. Thank you. Where did it go?
What was the name of that?
Open Gov. We'll be using it for our budget process as well.
And one non-related item, I hear that the RTD partnership grant amount is doubling for next year from $2 million to $4 million. So I think it would be helpful for us to, when we're thinking about funding things like Via Transit or other improvements, that's an opportunity for us to apply, get, get some funding. You know, and I don't know how much we would be able to access, but I think it would be a good opportunity for us, you know, find some matching funds for some of our transit efforts.
Have you ever been approved for any of those?
We got a, is it a year ago or two years ago, then we get a grant for Via Match Funds.
Unfortunately, I can't speak to that. I don't know. Chris, if you.
Chris Lindsay, Assistant City Manager. I don't, I don't know the name of the grant. I'm not sure. I can't even remember the, if it was RTD or Dr. Cog off the top of my head, so I'm not certain.
I think this RTD partnership one is new as of this year.
Okay.
So, but yeah, maybe it was Dr. Cog the last time.
We will definitely put it on the list and have a look at the grant.
One of the things talked about in the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners was all of the things around RTD. And we've got one group that wants to lessen how many people are elected, have people appointed. It could go also lots of ways. One of the ideas is make RTD regional only and each city take on the responsibility of mobility within their city. So just keep that in the back of your head as we look at legislation this year. And which brings me to legislation, especially in the Northwest corridor. We talked about some of the things they know are coming up and we still have preemption and there's not going to be consensus along that corridor. And it just reminded me, it will be good to keep this body informed of some of those things so that we can at least hear about it, chew on it, understand it, not just read about it after it's done. So that's almost all that we got done at that meeting. And we had a new House Representative that had time. So we were late getting her on. And the other thing that you reminded me of, is there any way, because we've had at least a couple of internet providers come through that we gave permission. And when we asked, what areas are you doing, especially historic Westminster? They hemmed and hawed and really didn't give us an answer. So because I've seen them all over the city, can we see a map of where internet has been provided so that we know equity there?
We can certainly take a look at it, Mayor. Sure.
Because if another one wants to come, they may get hit with, these are the areas that haven't been hit and we can't keep forgetting them, so.
I have a quick question related to that. So the mobility plan, we have one. When was the last update to the mobility plan? Can we get one?
Don't know, but we'll follow and let you know.
I'd appreciate it on self-service tow towers because where I live, we don't get that great a service. So I'd like to know where, I heard there was getting a tower at Walmart, but I haven't know where that's at.
I have a follow-up question to what you just mentioned. Is it true that we're getting Google Fiber in parts of the city?
Yes.
Okay, maybe that map should overlay with the other, you know, internet services, figure out what's being provided and how.
I think all of them, we need a map to know where everything is so we know who doesn't have anything. Because we have three school districts also in the city at all different areas that have the same issues. So we need to make sure there's equity of, because Westminster Public Schools during COVID, they bought the hotspots and gave them to their families so that they could have internet to do the lessons online. Anything else? Anything, sir? Okay. Seven minutes. If that clock is correct, we will see you after the vice. Thank you. If you write me and tell me that it's gone up.
Are we all here? Welcome to tonight's meeting of December 18th, 2023. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Westminster City Council meeting for December 18th, 2023. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted at the back of the room. These rules are in effect while our meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there's an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and placards are prohibited in council chambers and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia. Counsel, can I actually have, it won't pick up on the broadcast, so. No, it needs to be read. Turn, turn, just turn your button on again. There you go.
Present.
Thank you. Counselor Demont.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Haat.
Present.
Mayor McNally. Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Normella.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland.
Present.
That brings us consideration of minutes of the preceding meeting of minutes of December 4th, 2023. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the December 4th, 2023 meetings as presented.
Mayor Pro Tem Normella.
Second.
It's been moved and segmented to. It's been moved and segmented to approve the minutes of December fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Does anybody have any changes or questions? All those that approve, say aye.
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 Motion carries. There are no presentations this evening. That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the city council. Each participant will be given no more than five minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back and forth discussion. If there is a public hearing scheduled for the item of which you wish to speak, please hold your comments and testify when the public hearing is called. Tonight, there are no public hearings on the agenda. This evening, the city clerk has informed me that we have two emails?
Yes, two emails.
Uh, by the deadline, which have been posted on the online agenda packet and forward directly to the city council. And do we have any voicemails?
No voicemails.
Which will be played back if we had them. And city clerk, would you please call our first speaker?
The first speaker is Tim Page. Tim Page. The next speaker is Tom Lambo.
Welcome.
Hello, thank you. Hello to everyone. I'm here to pray for the city of Westminster. But first, I want to say thank you to all the people that have served on the council that aren't here now and all those that ran and are seated. Congratulations. I believe it takes a lot to be in your position. And also, I believe that God wants our elected officials to stand and don't do things as politicians, but do things as children of God in political position. He's put you in your position, so serve Him. I also want to celebrate two hundred and thirty-two years of the ratification of the First Amendment, which was ratified December fifteenth, seventeen ninety-one. I believe it's important, gives us the right for free speech, which I gladly use. So, please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father in Jesus Christ's victorious name, I invite you here to the city of Westminster. Please be here and lead us. Westminster is yours and we are glad that you are present here with us. You are God over everything. In Daniel two twenty-one, it states, "He changes the times and seasons; he removes kings and establishes kings; he gives wisdom to the wise and knowledge to those who have understanding." There's nothing you can't do and nowhere you won't go. You love humanity and you want all people to know your love. You've already defeated our enemy and have victory in the spiritual battle. We will continue to declare it and wait on you. Father, we cause a lot of stress for ourselves. We get worked up over situations and fail to see a clear path to a solution. It can be overwhelming. Help us to walk in faith. Grant us understanding of the days we are in. Help us to make sense of what is going on around us and to know that nothing can come against us. Your word states in Galatians five one, "Christ has liberated us to be free. Stand firm then and don't submit again to a yoke of slavery." Let your words be real and live in our daily lives. Help us to break any bondage we are in and walk calmly with you. In Christ's precious name we pray. Amen. Thank you and enjoy your holiday season.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alan Farb.
Welcome.
Regarding our unhoused community being relegated to the lowest caste in America and in Westminster, especially as the number of homeless children, women, and men grows exponentially all around us. What we advocates in America, in Colorado, and yes, here in Westminster, are doing is the rightful fight for social justice. It's a rightful fight for the non-criminalization of the homeless, for being homeless. A rightful fight for hope against indifference. A rightful fight for human dignity. You know, the remarkable, unflappable, and courageous, the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. invested himself into a thirteen-year campaign for social justice. A justice for black Americans, yes, yet indeed justice for all. Dr. King paid the ultimate price at the age of just thirty-nine for loudly, profoundly calling out the indignities, the inhumanities, the open subjugations too long perpetrated on black Americans and in truth, for all marginalized Americans. Even today, fifty-five years after the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s murder, we continue to battle these still obvious, even insidious indignities and subjugations. Dr. King said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." And Holocaust survivor, writer, and Nobel laureate, Elie Wiesel echoed that. He said, "Because of indifference, one dies before one actually dies." We here today, in this twenty-first century, continue to hold on to old feeble and callously ingrained beliefs that some people are of a higher rank and more deserving than those who are perceived by some as people of a lesser god. Have some of us learned nothing from Dr. King and from Mr. Wiesel? We're at a moment of truth. City council offered thousands of dollars for Westminster PD to increase its army of high-tech drones. Council provides a million dollars of our city funds to its golf courses to help cover their debt, even while those golf courses have recently recorded record earnings. Council handed another million dollars to Jefferson County for that county's homeless, not our cities. And this city spent at least a half million dollars, likely more, on the one hand for its professional outreach to the homeless and on the other hand policing, siding, removing, and clearing away the makeshift homes of its unhoused women and men. This is an effort that continues to be a costly smoke and mirrors of its so-called Continuum of Compassion Plan that fails month after month, year after year. I'm hoping we have council members with the foresight and fiscal creativity to work with us advocates. We have potential solutions. At times, I've even offered to council some of those that are proven and show promise in other cities, large and small. All it takes is for council and staff to join your own Westminster community members in a collaborative effort toward a real and deliverable solution. The city has been, has before assembled, community advisory teams, such as the one that's looking into our drinking water. And I believe at last week's study session, it was city manager Freitag who said of that team that for the city, this was, quote, "another part of our citywide engagement process," unquote. Okay, let's get engaged on this. Because when it comes to homelessness, you cannot just will it away or in one form or council or sentiments, just call the unhoused trespassers or offer the solution of putting them on trains and shipping them elsewhere. I'm not asking you to be Martin Luther King Jr. I'm not asking you to be Elie Wiesel. I'm just asking you that when it comes to our unhoused residents, that you actually do the right things, do the just things, and work with your community. The citizens are waiting, both the housed and the unhoused. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker I had signed up.
And did Mr.? Did Mr. Page show up?
Is Tim Page in the audience?
I'm Scott Schilling.
Mr. Schilling is not on my list, but, um, Tim Page is not here.
Okay. Mr. Schilling, we have a process to sign up, but if you didn't get signed up today.
I did sign up. I gave my address.
Come on up to, come up to the podium, please. Welcome.
My name is Scott Schilling. I want to congratulate all of you for, the new folks, for becoming members of the council. I ran against you. It was a fair fight and it was a fun fight. Now, with that in mind, I want to issue five challenges to you. Five. Challenge number one. I want you to figure out and spend the appropriate amount of money to resolve the crime problems in southern Westminster, this city. It's a city tragedy, what's going on there. They have no grocery store chains anymore. They moved out because of crime. We need to allocate the money, aggressively enforce those laws that we have there, and solve that problem. We will know that the problem is solved if a grocery chain moves back in. The second challenge I have for you is on this homeless problem. I feel that we need to make sure that we have a program in place where we can pull out those people who are truly C's and little programs that are in Denver, programs that are elsewhere, only act to enable homelessness. Boulder's problem has gone from six thousand to nine thousand. Denver's getting out of control. And one of the reasons is, is we're enabling this by giving them money and whatever. A good, solid program is more aggressive. It's uncomfortable, but it would work. Be smart with what you do. Challenge number three. This water treatment plant. I've done the math on this. It's ugly. Okay, we're, we've already spent forty million dollars. We're getting ready to borrow a hundred and fifty million dollars on a twenty-year note for, you know, at five percent. That's nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars a month for a plant that can produce just a little over four hundred and some million gallons a month. When you do the math and do the fees, that's two dollars and seventeen cents on top of the money that we already spent. For those of you that are listening, here's the math. You can pause and have a look. Here's how much gallons are produced. Here's the five percent. Here's the amount of money that's being borrowed. This is their duration. This is the net result that we pay. This is the cost per gallon. This is what it would cost. We charge by thousand gallons. This, ladies and gentlemen, is spooky. And that's only to service the loan. What about overruns and the cost of managing this? So our rates are going to go from seven to nine? Please rethink this. Challenge number four. Do not use taxpayer money to subsidize housing. This is not a city problem. This is a state problem, a state problem. Let the market handle this. We could spend twenty million dollars and we could help thirty families. What about the other ten thousand? They would be left out and would just cost us money. Okay? Let the market handle this. If it's too costly to live here, people will leave. And when they leave, the demand for housing will go down. The prices will go down. Or there'll be nobody to work. So, you know, employers will need to raise their salaries and rates. Okay? Be aware that let the market can handle this. We, as a city, cannot handle a statewide problem. Now, for my final challenge, I created a chart using public information from the website, okay? Down here at the bottom, the green section.
Your time is up.
Out of time. I will address this on the next time I'm here.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can we ask you to give your, your chart and your figures to the clerk so that our staff can look at it and see how it actually matches up with what we're doing?
Which chart?
The one that you gave about the water, please.
Sure. I will give it to them after the meeting.
Thank you. Brings us to city managers' report.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, ladies and gentlemen that are in attendance, and anybody who might be watching this on our live stream. So, a couple of updates. First of all, if we could go to the next slide. So, a city update. A great news story from our police department. And so this past December ninth, officers from our police department drone operations group participated in our first-ever Community Drone Day hosted by the Westminster High School. That program was aimed at students of all ages and open to anyone in the community. We also had folks from the FAA, Colorado State University, Wisconsin Fire, or correction, Westminster Fire Department, and a local drone supplier and several youth drone soccer teams. And if you haven't seen drone soccer played yet, it's fascinating. I got a chance to see it at Westminster High School earlier this year. But our officers conducted demos on the police department's equipment and answered questions from students and community members. And so, a nice event for our police department, certainly our community. Next slide, please. Some Westy wins, a tree giveaway. So, our Parks, Recreation, and Libraries staff teamed up with a local contractor and some volunteers who were able to install sixty shade trees in the Skyland Vista neighborhood this fall. And so they were able to look at tree cover data that was provided by the University of Colorado. They identified two low-income census blocks that also had very low canopy cover. And so they sent postcards offering shade trees to the residents in the target area. Homeowners were then pre-qualified for a tree. And if a space was available in their yard, they would receive one of six drought-tolerant shade trees. And so, new trees will be under the watchful care of our city foresters' office for the next two years to make sure that those trees get established while they acclimate to those new surroundings. The tree giveaway was paid for by a one-time fifty thousand dollar allocation from our Parks, Rec, Libraries, and Open Space Advisory Board Neighborhood Enhancement Program grant. And so, another way to continue to build that urban forest that we have here in Westminster. Next slide. Some things to know. Lot of things, given of the time of year, are being canceled as we approach the holidays. So, special permits and license board meeting this Wednesday, seven to eight thirty PM. That's been canceled. Please note that city administrative offices will be closed in observance of Christmas on Monday, December twenty-fifth. Next week, planning commission meeting, normally scheduled for Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, has been canceled. Our environmental advisory board meeting has been canceled for Wednesday, December twenty-seventh. Again, city administrative offices are closed in observance of New Year's Day on Monday, January first. And our next city council meeting will be Monday, January eighth, at six thirty PM, right here in council chambers. Next slide, please. We had three information-only items as part of the agenda materials. If there are any questions, we're happy to have folks answer them. But the first one was the update on the state of Colorado's Proposition One Twenty-three, which the city opted into back in June, and then some additional state housing funding opportunities. Also, the city of Westminster twenty-twenty-three sustainability highlights and our strategic plan update, which is our twenty-twenty-three year-end report. Next slide. And as always, we certainly want to be accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. If anybody has questions, concerns, feedback, good ideas, things that they'd like us to take a look at, you can certainly call my office at three oh three six five eight two thousand six. You can email me directly at the email list listed there. And as always, encourage you to follow us on X, like us on Facebook, check us out on Instagram, or ring our bell at Next Door. If any questions, that's what I have this evening.
Do council members have any questions on any of the information items that we have? Council members have any questions on any of the information items that we have? Okay, that brings us to city council comments. Counselor Ireland?
I just want to say that we live in a very expensive city. Taxes are going up, sales taxes, property taxes, HOA fees, water bills. My homeowner's insurance, I got a bill for that. That's like twice as what I paid last year. I just want us to be aware of what people are going through. And I see these expenditures our city makes. I'm seeing $615,000 today for libraries and materials. That is $12.81 per household. We need to be aware of what households are paying for all these expenses that we give them. I can't say that I use $12.81 a library a year myself. But I know libraries are important for people that are on the low end that need to get jobs, need computers. And it's a way to learn. But there's other things that come down the pipe that we just act like it's pocket change. And people are struggling in every part of our city. And we need to be aware of that. That's all I have to say tonight.
Anyone else? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I just wanted to lay the seed for when we get to our strategic planning process, it would be helpful to, as we prioritize and establish what might be the focus for next year, that we are thinking about how that can be supported through specific tasks, task forces. And so I think it is, you know, hearing Mr. Farbs' suggestion regarding a task, well, allusion to, I don't know if he specifically said that doing a task force for people experiencing homelessness. But I think that, that could be a good way of having more transparency and dialogue. And I think that's what we've been trying to establish with the water treatment plant. So any issues that are really, you know, we have so many different partners and so many different perspectives, that that's a good way to create that community conversation. So, like to see how we can, you know, through that strategic planning process, have the, you know, identify what those issues are and, you know, continue to use the task forces or other advisory boards to, to help us with doing better and communicating and being transparent.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who showed up tonight to address council. Appreciate hearing from folks. A couple of things that I would mention is thank goodness for Tabor because that means that taxes can't just go up without a vote of the people. Super important that you have the ability to do that as residents of the state of Colorado. Certainly, people's costs of everything with inflation have gone up and we've all felt it, including the city itself, with the cost of anything that we have to do for business. So, as though we certainly want to be mindful of what Counselor Ireland said, we also want to be thankful for the things that we do have to safeguard us in the state of Colorado. As far as a task force, I'd be open to that. But I would ask that we make sure that we have proper information from our partners who do the work around housing. And that obviously, for those who don't know, in the city of Westminster there's two counties, being the county of Adams and Jefferson County. So, if we're going to go after that, we certainly need to work with our partners because they are the ones that deal with the human services. So however we can partner with them, I think is appropriate. But looking forward to the strategic planning, I wanted to bring up a topic that I heard recently. So, those of you who know me well enough know that I go to the Flat Irons Church and over the holiday season, they always pick something that they're going to put money behind. In the past, they've done things like buy cars for households who don't have cars so that they can get to work. Lot of different things like that. This year, they're focusing on something that's pretty ugly that people don't like to talk about. And I would like to lobby my colleagues that this is something that we put some focus on in the city of Westminster. And what that is, is human trafficking. Unfortunately, modern age slavery and typically preyed on, I think that the stats that they talked about were between ages eight and 14, I believe, is the most common. And this is something that even in the state of Colorado, if you, they talked about somebody in law enforcement who spoke to the pastor of the church under, you know, not sharing his name, that said that the statistics that they share are nowhere close to the reality that they see on the streets. And so what my ask is, is that we make sure that we understand what stats we do have as a city and that that is something that we make sure that we are very harsh on as far as making sure it doesn't happen in our city if at all possible. I understand unfortunately, we can't stop people from being evil, but we certainly can combat it. And I think that that is a worthy cause for us to talk about putting money behind when we go through our strategic planning. For folks that want to be able to put money behind this, much like my church and myself have, there are a couple of organizations that I would point you to. There's America Kids Belong, Rise, AIM, and One Child. AIM, I believe, is the one that actually is working with governments overseas that actually is going out and rescuing people and putting brothels out of business. So the work that they do is very important. The thing that I would mention that is the most disturbing to me as an American is that America is one of the top consumers of the reason that this business exists. And it's disgusting and certainly needs to be stamped out. So, on a lighter note, I hope those of you who, like me, who will be celebrating the, our Savior this next week, get to spend time with your family. If you're not celebrating that, that you just at least get some good time with your family. This is the last meeting, obviously, that we have of the year. I want to thank our staff for all the hard work that you've done over the last 12 months and that you're getting ready to do for the next 12 months and wish everybody happy holidays.
Seeing nothing else, is there a motion to approve items 8A through D? Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8D.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve items 8A through D. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia?
I move to approve the consent agenda items 8A through 8D.
Counselor, the motion has been made. I just need you to vote.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Haat?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. It is now 7:30 and we have two post-meeting presentations and an executive session. Mr. Frankel, will you please read executive session title into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. Following the two post-meeting presentations, an executive session is proposed to review and discuss city facility security measures pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C6 and Colorado revised statute 2464024D.
Do I have a motion or no? I'm drawing a blank.
Sorry, Mayor. If, if you could ask your colleagues to vote on entering into that executive session, then we can once the two post-meeting items have concluded.
And do you want a roll call?
Voice is fine.
So, all those in favor of going into executive session after we do our two post-meeting, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we have that done and we will, anybody need a break before we go into? Okay, we'll take five minutes and then we'll meet in the other room. To all those who celebrated Hanukkah, I hope it was the best. I appreciate all of the invitations for going and Merry Christmas to the rest of you. And they don't have any place to be, so we're getting them resources. But, so that must have just happened. Onward. Do we have sheets of the, you know? No, hold on. And everybody had them. Yes, they, they've seen them. Perfect. While we're waiting for those, do we want to talk about scheduling city council team building and strategic planning process?
We can, I have some slides to get us going. As we started this process, I just think it's important for everybody to understand how the city staff plans, coordinates, resources, schedules, et cetera. So if you could go to the next slide. So if you could go to the next slide, that role is administration. That's what, that's what I do and what I lead. We look three to six months out. And so anything that's going on in first quarter, we were locking in earlier this fall, well before the election, well before anybody was, was scheduled. That's just how the organization operates. I think it's important to point out that, you know, we plan and schedule and coordinate all council agenda items, all the supporting materials, council events, to include town halls and community outreach events, all of our city's special events. Certainly our new counselor onboarding process, again, we sent this out on November thirtieth. You know, just so that everybody knew what's going on. And this is a year-long process and it's, it's not something that we take lightly. And certainly the annual budget process is scheduled, you know, by city staff. And the council comes up, comes into those items, you know, generally to either represent the city or to, you know, pass legislation, make decisions. But generally, the city staff is the one that's going to coordinate any event that you all participate in. And so I think it's important to point out that, you know, that's definitely an administrative role. Next slide. So before we begin, I did want to just share so that everybody has the same level of understanding of what we currently have scheduled. So currently, we have a team building and onboarding event scheduled for the city council on Saturday, the twentieth of January. It's at College Hill Library. From eight AM until twelve PM, we have Clifton Strengths team building. So we've coordinated, and I mentioned this in my email to the council earlier this month. But it didn't make any sense last year when I went through team building with the council. We did it actually in November of twenty twenty-two because I was the new member of the team. We did it at College Hill Library on a Saturday, but we used a system called DISC, which is a great evaluation tool for, you know, to build teams and people to understand their strengths and weaknesses and how to work with people that may not necessarily see the world the same way that they do. And but at the same time, the city staff, I was part of the city's efforts under Clifton Strengths to, to work through team building and self-evaluation. And so I asked the question, you know, why are we doing council with DISC and the city staff with Clifton Strengths? And so talked with the mayor this past summer and said, hey, I'm going to align the council with what the city staff is using. That's Clifton Strengths so that we all are speaking the same language. And so one of the products of Clifton Strengths is, you know, out of thirty-one performance measures, where your top five Clifton Strengths and the executive leadership team of the city, every week reviews how our Clifton Strengths either help or hinder us in, in our interactions with the team. And so not surprisingly, my top five are disciplined, responsibility, achiever, relator, and analytical. But with that, we have coordinated for a Clifton Strengths coach to come in on the twentieth. The individual's contracted schedule. We also have coordinated for surveys to be issued to the council right after the new year. And then one-on-one at your, at your scheduling, one-on-one feedback session so that when you come to the team building event on the twentieth, that you have an understanding of what your strengths are, what your top five strengths are out of the thirty-one. And then from twelve to one that day, we're scheduled for a discussion lunch, over lunch, where the council can essentially talk amongst each other. What are your term objectives for the next two-year period while this council is together and in place? And then from one to two, we've got the clerk and the attorney who will talk council rules and regs. And then the assistant to the city manager will come in from two to three and speak to council protocols. Our attendees right now are the council, the manager, the city attorney, the presiding judge. Those are the three employees of the council. And then also the city clerk and the A two CM for their roles in presenting. But that's, you know, that's a seven-hour day, may not go that long based upon conversation. But wanted to make sure you all understood that's what we've coordinated for that day. Next slide. So just some pros and cons. You know, with the release on November thirtieth, that's seven weeks advance notice. It is conducted similarly to last year's team building event. We're just using a different medium. Instead of DISC, we're doing Clifton Strengths. I've offered this in my email to the council. It does allow for better freedom of conversation among the council when we go off-site and on a Saturday. Because, you know, if you can't talk about your feelings and how you interrelate with others in, you know, in that small group setting, you know, it's difficult to really develop and build the team. That's why a Saturday off-site is so beneficial. And like I said, it aligns the council's team building program with staff's. The cons, it's held on a Saturday. We currently have two events scheduled on Saturdays. One is this team building event and the other is a budget workshop, which is normally done in early August. And con, there is an external cost. It's not significant, but it, it does add cost. All right, and so that's just some pros and cons for your consideration. Next slide, please. So then I wanted to talk about strategic planning. We've currently scheduled strategic planning for two council study sessions. One at the end of January, first of, correction, January twenty-ninth, and then another one on the February fifth. And the, the thing that's important to note is, is we've blocked those two study sessions specifically to talk about the strategic plan. And we're, we're not using a facilitator. I know you've used Michelle previously. We're offering to do that with staff. We've got plenty of folks that are trained to present and to lead the organization for a real strategic planning session. So save a little bit of money. Monday, the first of, correction, January twenty-ninth, that first session, we would review our city mission, our vision, strategic priorities, and then develop any supporting objectives that we would like to work on. And then take a break and then come back on the evening of February fifth or twenty-fourth, develop supporting objectives, tasks, and KPIs. So that's, that's the plan as it currently sits. Next slide. So pros for strategic planning. Again, this one, it's about, it starts a week later, so eight weeks advance notice. It's held in January during a Monday, Monday study session, just like we did last year. I know that the council hasn't always done that. I queried staff who have been here for twenty years and it's kind of changed, you know, over the years. It's not done this year like it was last year, the year before, the year before, and so on. We did add that second study session. Last time we did it in one study session. This year, we added that second one because we know we have new, three new counselors who may have more questions. There may be more discussion. And so we wanted to make sure we gave ourselves plenty of time. And I think this is important. And so for anybody who's done strategic planning, I've done strategic planning one day, eight hours, nine hours, and you're smoked by the end of that eight to nine hours. And what I have learned in my experience is taking a break in between that, those sessions is helpful. You don't get that single day burnout, but it also allows you that third piece of that fourth bullet. And that is time to process. And what I've learned is, is that I'll think of things after we've started something that I want to come back and add and discuss. And that second session gives you that opportunity to do that. Also gives us the opportunity to have the council and staff work together to build the city strategic plan. Because it's on a Monday night regularly scheduled, the, the public can attend and they can certainly watch. And in this setup, we get the plan set before we begin budget development. Because you certainly want to have the plan in place before you start applying money to that plan. And because we're doing this with staff expertise, there'd be no external cost. Next slide. Cons, and I think this is a big one. And so as I thought about this, this kind of changed my outlook on this. But I think we're out of sequence and out of, out of the right timing for this. But if we do strategic planning at the end of January, beginning of February, there's no opportunity for public input. And so we currently have a community engagement survey that is scheduled. Last one the city did was in two thousand twenty-two. We do them every two, every two years after an election. But it's scheduled to run from January until April with the results being provided in April. And I think that's important because why in the world would you chart a strategic plan if, if you haven't received public input? I have heard the comment that, you know, the election is the public input. The result of the election is the public input. But again, we have twenty thousand people that vote, a hundred and twenty thousand people in the community. So some voices may not have necessarily been involved in that election. So I think that getting some public input is, would be helpful. So next slide. So my recommendation is we conduct the team building and onboarding on Saturday, one twenty twenty-four at College Hill Library as planned. However, we shift the strategic planning session until May of twenty-four. Do two study sessions again, but that way we receive public input through the results of that community survey. And again, I think that if you think about the annual cycle of the city, you start with January through April is your window for your community survey so that you know what the community is interested in and where they would like to go. Then May, you do your strategic plan. And then June, you begin your council budget where you're applying funds to that, to that strategic plan based upon public input from the community. I did talk to the staff and the, the city has done this process previously, not recently, but certainly previously. And, you know, frankly, it makes sense to me to shift strategic planning to May of twenty twenty-four so that we can take advantage of the public input. So throw that out there, you know, we can make the adjustments that you need. This makes sense to me, but happy to entertain any questions or open up for comments, discussion.
Counselor.
I'm, I'm curious when the decision was made to pull our facilitator that council picked.
When the decision was made?
Yeah, who made, who made that decision? Because council didn't make that decision.
No, nope, absolutely not. I, I would question why we need a facilitator when we have people on the staff that can lead the effort. Why would we spend money if we don't have to?
For the six years that I've been here, council has worked with staff to pick a facilitator to come in and run this process for us.
We certainly, certainly can. I, I wouldn't, you know, wouldn't recommend that. I don't think there's a need for it. But, you know, again, it's, it's just money, right?
No, it's not just money. We need to stop this. It's just money. It's the people's money.
Okay, so then not having a facilitator makes sense.
I think January twentieth would've been perfect to have a strategic plan. I mean, I've been walking every neighborhood in the city for three years and I know what people want. And I think these surveys, we're getting the same people who voted probably doing the survey.
Actually, they go out to addresses, specific addresses.
Well, how many do you get back percentage-wise?
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't done one before. But I guess my point was, is that we're trying to get public input to feed a strategic planning process.
I wasn't quite finished if I.
Sure, great.
What I would put across to my colleagues is the, the benefit that I see in having a third party that council picks is that it's a third party who is going to look at both sides, both staff and council, and work with both sides of it to make sure that we as the electeds who are setting the policy, you know, are, there's that kind of, just that third party who both keeps us in check, but also keeps the organization in check. It's been very beneficial in my opinion. We've had third-party facilitators that, you know, do better than others. We've changed over time. I know there was a different one that they used when the mayor was here before. I don't, you know, I don't think it's just money, but I think that there is times when money is well-spent, when it's not well-spent. To me, having a third-party facilitator makes a lot of sense. Who, basically, this is what they do. They focus in this. I worked for an organization called the Alternative Board for two years early in my career that's here in the city of Westminster. All they do is strategic planning. Their whole business process is around doing strategic planning for businesses or individuals to help them meet their goals. So I, I am a strong believer in having a third party who, you know, that, and this is why I think it was important, the process that we went through. I went through the process twice with former mayor and mayor pro Tim and counselor Anita Seitz, that both times that we picked, she and I were part of that group. And it wasn't just she and I, we were picked by council to go through that process. And then staff had members of their team that were a part of that process. And we went through and said, here's the ones that we think are the best solution or best option. So I would just put it across, it's not that I don't think we have a capable staff because I certainly think that we are, do. I just think that there is big benefit in having that third party. So, you know, obviously, I'm, I'm one voice, but I want you to understand why I feel very strongly about it. Being, you know, this will be the seventh time that I've went through this process, being on council. And I know, you know, the mayor probably has some opinion about it because she's definitely been through it more times than I have.
Counselor Ireland, did you have anything else?
I just want to know how much this survey is costing because we do a lot of surveys in this city.
I, I have no idea how much the survey costs. It's something the city's done for many years and it's, you know, every two years, like I said, it's just part of the, part of the normal drill.
Well, Nancy, you've been in the city for a while. Did you get good feedback from it?
You do.
What percentage-wise do you get?
Gosh, didn't we get like ten percent? We, we got a higher than what we needed for the statistical relevance with the last one we did.
It's like the election, it's a disappointing amount of people who participate. But it is statistically, mathematically enough people to meet that standard of statistics so that it's a sampling of the city.
And last time we did it geographically focused so that they would focus in on making sure there were enough people representing.
And they showed us some heat maps, which was really useful, I thought, to know where the feedback came from and what problems people said in the different parts of town.
Well, I walked every part of town and I kind of know the problems in every part of town. I think some, a lot of us have, but anyway.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Well, I, a couple of things. One on the, on the team building on the twentieth. My, my only suggestion for that, the agenda is to the point that Counselor Ireland just made. You know, if we're having that conversation about what are, what are we hearing? Kind of what are we wanting to focus on, that objectives, conversation over lunch to provide a little bit of flexibility if that really does become a very fruitful conversation to not be so beholden to the schedule, to just kind of let that surface. Because I think a lot, you know, being able to get everything that's fresh off the, hot off the press in your mind would be great to kind of have that opportunity to download. So that's one thing. The other thing is I, I agree with Counselor Demat because, regarding the facilitation. I, I would say that the, the last workshop we had internally led by staff felt a little, you know, like we were keeping very much to a schedule and that while we had some breakout sessions, they were kind of short and it just felt, it felt like it was moving through pretty quickly. For the strategic plan, the process that we experienced with Michelle, Michelle, right? Was a little more relaxed. We were able to, you know, we felt like she had a good handle on understanding what we needed to spend more time on and not, and facilitation is a very specific skill. And we also, you know, with, between council and staff, there is a power dynamic as well. And there's also just a, you know, I, I would hope that staff would be able to feel as open to the conversation as, as we are able to feel. And I think a facilitator provides that. And so I, I would be supportive of, of bringing in a facilitator and continuing that. If it, maybe it makes more sense to, you know, I do like the idea of kind of listening to the community through the survey. But I also, you know, I still want to make sure we capture where everybody's at right now. And if that survey informs us, perhaps a legislative session informs. Um, and if that survey informs us, perhaps the legislative session informs us a little bit more too, as we would go into that May. Strategic planning session, and then we would have time to select a facilitator and go through that process. Um, if we wanted, you know, to get a new one, um, so that, that's my input.
Counselor Azadi?
Thanks, Mayor, um. Can you go back a couple slides? I think there was something on this pros. Um, so, I, I agree with Mayor Pro Tem and Council Demott. Facilitation is important, and it's a skill, um, and we, we, we've all been through strategic planning in our lives and careers. Um, I was literally professionally certified in strategic planning, and I know for sure, it's not something that. Especially now with this, so strategic planning for us, for the city, is the most important thing that we'll do as a council. So, that's kind of the underpinning of all of my comments that I'm gonna make, is. One, we need to, it needs to be e- external to the points that, that they made, but two, the timing. To wait six months, um well, five months from now, but six months from the election, to do strategic planning. Is the wrong move, I would be strongly against that, I don't think our residents have time for us to wait for that. I, I think they've told us over the last several years, we had a survey last year, we could use that, I think that's, that's still pretty accurate.
Two years ago, twenty-two.
That's last year, twenty-twenty-two, so we, we, we just did it. Um, it was, it wasn't that much different from the previous one before that one. We know what people need, we have enough data, we see what's happening, we all speak to the residents, it's, I mean, very often. It's not gonna tell us anything new, is my point, and we have a housing need assessment that just got done, that we'll have right on time. Because that's the, probably the most important thing, input-wise for us, for that strategic plan um session. So, and that's fresh off the press, that just finished this month, that's all we need, honestly, we have a lot of data. Um, the three new folks who just got on council, I'm sure they have a lot of ideas, right? That they've been itching to get through, to have them wait five months before they, we can re, you know, talk about it, that just. Sends a signal to the community that government is as slow as they think it is. And we don't want that message out there, we want them to know that we're doing something. Um so I'm strongly against that timing, it has to be next month in my opinion, and I hope everyone here would agree with, with that. Um, and the last thing, to have a full day for team building, that was good. So I, so we went through that when, when we first came on, it's good, it's useful, um, but to have that on a Saturday. Which implies it's really important, which it is, but then having our strategic plan on two, two consecutive Mondays, that implies. That's a little less important than this thing over there, and I think the plan is five times more important than the team building. Um, they're both really important, but I think the plan is five, five, five X, maybe ten, right, so. We need to prioritize what's important and having, and what we did, you know, having that on a day or two days. Where we have our full brain capacity, so we all work in different capacities, right? Coming from work to a Monday night, it's not the best use of our brain when we, it's the most important. So, we all know the stats, right, our brain is at its best in the mornings, daytime, right? We wanna come in fresh with all ideas and that's why those Saturdays were so important to us, because it means a lot. Mentally, that we can focus on it fully, not coming from whatever we're doing throughout the day. So, I would like to see the plan on a dedicated day, because it is that important, and that's all I got.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll, I'll say um, from an objective standpoint, I'm gonna say that I agree with um Mayor Pro Tem and Counselors Demott and Azadi. Uh Azadi, I'm sorry, on the having a facilitator, I just think that that's, I think it's a proven statistical fact. You know, that that's um the right way to do it when you have two parties, and I think that it, we would all benefit from it, really, so.
Um, yeah, I um just wanted to say that um, I think that anytime that the public can have input, that it's good. Um I've knocked on doors for the last four years, but you don't knock on every door, and not everybody answers. And it depends on who's willing to engage with you, and so um I, I think that there are probably voices that I didn't hear. Um so I'm, I always think it's good, we're a representative government, and, and I think it's always good if public can have input. So we can represent them the way they'd like to be represented, and that's what I'd like to say.
Before you go, I'm gonna go.
Yeah.
Our rules, everybody gets to talk first, sometimes I forget I haven't talked. Um, boy, I'll just share, the ugliness in me says, so if staff wants to do it, write up everything and bring it back to us and. See, see where we land, that's my ugliness of this, because we're at the top of the chain. You are our employee, and yet we don't have these conversations until we get here. Um, and that's a missing piece for me. Um. The reason I always felt Friday and going into Saturday, a Friday evening going into Saturday. And I know other groups um after I left did it differently. But doing the, the team building Friday night and getting to know each other, going through things, and then Saturday, spending your day. With um strategic planning and working through that, um, I agree, I, I don't function. Coming, I, I can plan for an agenda. That I know the meetings and what we have to talk about and the decisions that have to be made that night on a Monday, coming from doing fifteen things in. A daytime, I'm not coming here with brainstorming ideas and I am focused on this. A strategic plan is where we need to listen to all seven of us, see where there are, are. Things that we can each pull together on, see new ideas, hear them, and come up with something that none of us. Came to the table thinking, and that's when we know we've done a good job. And you're not gonna do that on a Monday, I just, we're just not gonna do that on a Monday, because we're gonna be watching the clock. And when it hits nine thirty or ten, we're exhausted, and we leave and, and I do. I will not carry over whatever happened there to another Monday night, have to get my head into it. That's just me, and why I've been sort of a pit bull on this whole thing, because it doesn't make sense to me. Um. A facilitator that is not staff that works for you. And um, and that we really don't interact with much. Um, i- is pretty daunting and intimidating even with seasoned people, let alone brand-new people. Um, that facilitator can, I've had facilitators that get to know us so well. They know when we're holding back on something, and if all the guts don't get on the table, then we have skeletons that arise. So you have to have that facilitator that's gonna bring the good, the bad, and the ugly to the table. So we can sift through everything and become a team to work together. Um, so I'm, uh, uh, I'm surprised, um. Shifting to May, here, here's some of my thoughts with that, I, I know what it felt like in twenty-one coming in. Um. And I just kept getting told, a- all of us that um, well, the past council, the past council, council approved this. Well, it wasn't the council that was sitting before these people, and so that gets old and ugly real quick. If we need to change some of the planning, why don't we shift the, the um. Survey for the community to whatever we need it in the fall. So that it comes um, and we're ready to go in January. Um because we use the strategic plan to do our evaluations, to look at what people are doing. And if you're halfway through a s- a, a session, it's only in a year and a half that this council has with that strategic plan. Um, anyway, I. I, I, I wholeheartedly believe in a facilitator that we feel comfortable with, because we're the ones that need to work with them. And we want them to bring the best out in us. Um, that, we need, but I still think it needs to be a Saturday, and I do believe in the um. Team building, and I, like I said, I, I don't know how else we can get around getting. Feedback from people, but change the survey to meet. So that we, a new council starts out with their ideas and thoughts, instead of living somebody else's for the six, first six months. And then only having eighteen months to live with that, I, I've been through it, it's horrible, uh, it's ugly, and I don't want you to have to do that, so.
Um, on that note, I think one, the couple opportunities that I would put across, listening to the conversation and. Seeing some of the new stuff proposed, I, I like the idea the mayor just put forward about moving it to the fall. Obviously, we can't go back in the past and do that, so that might be a forward-thinking thing, so an idea. Spitballing for this year, because I also agree with Counselor Azadi that, you know, the. You have to have that strategic plan, it's that whole day, in my mind. But the team building, I think, needs to go before that, and the reason why that's important in my mind is, you know. Uh half, about half of us don't really know each other that well, you know what you've heard out in the political realm, and that's not always gonna be accurate. Sometimes it is, sometimes it's not, um so getting to know each other and getting to understand how you process things, and how you share things, and how you think about things. Um, we definitely saw a lot of value last time in understanding how, you know, people process things, and I think that will help us as we do. The strategic plan to try to collaborate with each other, so maybe an opportunity, um, you know, is to do a Monday night. Strategic planning as, in, or team building before a Saturday-long strategic planning. Because I could see some value in if I did the team building and I had a week to think about the things that I learned about my colleagues going into that. That could potentially be something that we could do if you don't, if, because I did see through all the emails back and forth. Sunday is hard for some people in this group, Friday is hard for other people in this group, so maybe there's a, an in-between win. Um, the other thing that.
Or find two Saturdays.
Or that, that's a possibility as well. Um but I do firmly believe that that team building before the strategic planning uh is important, not necessarily because. It's more important, it's just gonna help us do our work better and be a better team. Um, but maybe for this year, for, as far as the survey, maybe that's one of those things that we uh. And I mean, we kinda do this anyway, but maybe we make a very specific point to come back after the survey. And measure it up with what we came up with as far as staff um goals that they put forward, that match up to the policies that we put forward. So we can look and see are there any missing gaps or things that we were wildly off that, you know, from the, the survey. I don't think that we probably will, because I think we're all engaged enough that we'll probably be close, but maybe there, there could be room for opportunity. Um, and then, moving forward, maybe they move that to the fall, so then, then, you know, the next time this comes up, that it's before strategic planning. Because the other thing that I, I wanted to mention is, listening to the conversation is, um, last year's strategic planning. The, the new piece was the city manager, the council had been through, you know, the whole council that was there had been through one before. So I think that uh in my time, the, the strategic planning and team building when you have new members. That year is a little bit different, so it would make sense for that survey to go, you know, the year before, the fall before you have a new council being seated. Because that kinda tools that new councils, they go through that whole process, so um, food for thought.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I think that um, Counselor Demott, uh I think, think that's a good compromise.
Why he said, no, I'm just kidding, um, I, 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 I agree with a lot of what Counselor Demott just said, I.
Love the idea of better aligning the timing of the community's survey in the future, um. I agree, it's not my favorite thing to be pushing our, you know, so she did, so, I can't say it this late. Strategic, a planning.
See, Monday night.
I know, right? Strap, but yes, oh, um, I don't love pushing it that far either, and um, I know. I know it's impactful to staff for, you know, uh, the weekend days, so I also am cognizant of that. And um, so if there is maybe more of a Monday night um team building, you know, I'd be a supportive of that. Um, I mean, I'll, it's, it's so important, I mean, I'll, I'll make the time to figure out the Saturdays. Um, you know, it's not, I know, I, I'm like, um, I, I, I know it's tough for staff. Um, the other thing too is, you know, it could be a smaller staff contingent there at the strategic plan um. Session, and you know, they could listen to a recording or something afterward too. Um, because if they're just listening in, that's an element that, I don't feel like we had a ton of. When we had all, we had a lot of, I don't remember which one, but we had a lot of staff listening in, maybe on both of them. But I don't feel like we tapped into the staff too much in that strategic plan session, so.
Sometimes just ask questions.
Yeah.
We'd send an email out and they'd get it back.
Yeah, so I, you know, just food for thought with how to actually staff the strategic plan session, but. Um I'm open to what we need to do, I just wanna get it done too.
I agree with the, with, with all of that, and if it is a problem for staff to have a planning session on a Saturday. Then that's probably, we don't need staff for team building, honestly. I don't know why we would be staffed, uh we, we ne- we never use staff.
There's, there's no staff at team building.
There is none.
Other than the three appointees.
Okay.
Because that's your team.
Okay, so then, I would be in favor of having team building on Monday nights, or keep it Saturday, but find another Saturday for planning. And to Counselor, and to Mayor Pro Tem's point. For planning, we barely use, it, I, I think we had a few questions, it wa- it wasn't that much that we needed staff for, so you could whittle that down.
I would say, I realize this is a sacrifice on everyone's part, but I am in favor of two Saturdays, I just think that this is important enough, and I think that. Um, it was mentioned earlier, you know, this might be one of the most important things we do, is this, the strategic planning. And so I realize that on everybody's part, it's a big sacrifice, so thank you in advance, but I really do think this is important enough. Let's just find two Saturdays and make it happen.
I agree. I'm open to that. Okay, we need to find two Saturdays, we need team building first, and we need strategic plan second, and we need a facilitator. Did, did our contract go up with Michelle?
It, it hasn't, because we weren't planning on that, we have to coordinate her, coordinate with her.
I just didn't, I didn't know if it was still, um, if we still had a contract with them, not being a part of that, so. Okay, do we have assignments for?
I'll start at the top of the list and you can just go down. Um, the first vacancy we have is election commission.
I'll do it.
Um, the next one is environmental advisory board. Um, then historic landmark board. Then we need a um representative and an alternate for human services board.
I would like to be human services board.
I'll be the alternate.
The next one is um personnel board.
I'll do it.
And then we need a um representative and an alternate for planning commission.
Let me just state, planning commission is sometimes um, one that the per liaison says hi. And lets people know you're there, but if it's going to be coming to council, um, our attorney would tell you, you probably shouldn't sit through it, so. Um, if you ever have. Um, our attorney would tell you, you probably shouldn't sit through it. So um, if you ever have a question, if you take this on. He will let you know if you should sit through it or if you should just say hi. Uh, if they have questions, you know, they know who to contact as their liaison, but um, that then you leave. So that you don't put yourself in an awkward position. Anybody for the backup?
My current, I was doing that, but my current job conflicts.
I took you off because of that. And if people don't get a vacant, but you have to not attend something, just throw it out on Facebook and or on. Or email and somebody will answer. And then we, special permits and licensing.
When do they meet?
Wednesdays, um, it's the first and third Wednesdays of each month.
Where is that?
It's on the back of the first page. Did you say that? Let me take it. The ne- the next page is external boards. So we have a vacancy for the alternate for the AdCog Subregional Transportation Forum.
When is that?
Um, the fourth Wednesday of every month or as needed.
It's usually virtual.
Okay, I'll do the alternate. I'm the alternate, right?
Yes, yes. Mayor Protam is the lead on that. Um, the next, we, on the Policy Committee for Colorado Municipal League. Um, we have two vacancies.
I would like to take that.
Richard Lindsay.
Super important.
It's three times a year, right? A month or, yeah. All right.
I'll do it, okay.
I said it's a good one to be on if you. Colorado Municipal League.
And then um the next one is we need an alternate for Dr. Cog.
I'll do it.
And I would just, having been that representative, and it just go, even if you can team up and go together. Just so you understand, cause it's a a different animal. And if you ever had to step in, you'd you'd feel better going to a few of the meetings.
Okay. And the good thing is you can also join virtually to either one of them too, so if you're conflicted at all. The the work sessions are uh virtual on the first Wednesday. At like four or something, yeah, four to five thirty and then the, oh, it's right there, yeah. And then the um other ones are typically in person.
And can I just talk about the Jeffco?
Yes.
Um, the Jeffco um mayors and commissioners and managers, it's open to all councils. And sometimes other coun- other folks are there from the different councils. Um, it's just to hear what each city's doing, somebody's and they rotate cities for who's gonna present. Something and um that also has a virtual component that you can attend. But I really wanted y'all to know, anybody can attend that one. It's just getting, and it's for the Jeffco side. So you get to know what's going on in Jeffco.
That is helpful. I didn't realize.
Yeah.
It was just mayor, okay.
Yeah, no, it's not just the mayor. It's it's open. Yeah.
It says in the morning though. What day of the week is it?
It is a.
It's Thursdays usually.
Is it a Thursday? Yeah.
It's pretty early too.
Usually starts at seven thirty, I think.
They have a virtual for that too, don't they?
They do have virtual or try to carpool and go out. Okay, sorry.
Nope, you're great. Um, the next one we have open is the Jefferson County Transportation Forum. Uh, the alternate for that.
I'll I'll do that.
Um, the next one we need is another representative for the Metzger Foundation.
I'm interested.
Counselor Hutt? Okay, and um what this is, the, it's the two mayors um from each city. Because we're with in Bloomfield that own this property. And then a counselor each. And then we take the. Co-chairs, secretary, and treasurer. I don't know what's open. Just know it'll get one of those um designated. And we just meet once a year.
Okay, fabulous.
It's a great group. The next one we have open is the North Metro Arts Alliance. It's on the back of the second page.
I can do that.
And then um the last one is the alternate for the Rocky Flat Stewardship Council.
Um, do we know what day of the week it is?
Just this morning.
I think Rich told me once they get their new people, they sorta see if that works or if they change, so.
I struggle.
So it's quarterly, so.
Right. I I would love to be on that, so I'll take it. It's just that I struggle with anything during business hours.
Sure, sure. Understand. Okay, does that finish us up?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam and Council. I will get this typed up and send it out with the notes. So you can make sure that I reflect what you decided for it.
Real quick, can I ask, did, are we allowed an alternate in the CNR? Because that, I don't think we have an alternate right now. Well, the mayor was kinda filling in, but she has a conflict because. The advisory is that night. So it would be nice to have a designated one because I can't always make it. And it certainly uh would be nice to just say this is the other person so that if the public doesn't see me there, they realize that we. Have two people covering that.
That would be good. And then we need to send a note to them to.
It should be, it should be rare. I should be able to um make it most of the time. Um.
What are we talking about?
It's the.
At this point, it's a lot of fun.
You get lots of public input. Um, the Rocky Mountain Stewardship Council is on Mondays.
Hmm, thank you. Try not to over.
I knew she would step up and.
Yeah, yes.
Take it on.
I really shouldn't take that.
Okay.
I'll I'll take it.
Okay.
Did you hear that? The Mayor Protam said she'd be my alternate for the CNR.
Okay.
I feel like that might not be true. I would like to hear.
I I can, I I guess I could do, um, if it's. I will attempt. So maybe, you know, if somebody throw me a bone, if if I for some reason can't do it. Cause I do actually schedule a lot of my community meetings for my day job on Thursdays because it's usually. As, yeah, so that's all. That's the only reason.
And obviously the past council, I think every one of us um passed around uh as an alternate and so.
I'm sure we'll all get our chance.
Yeah.
Team sport on CNR.
We do team building, so you'll be an alternate.
It's not a bad, and and it was helpful, I, you know, that there's the virtual thing and it is important. I just.
It's super interesting.
But no, it it is, it is actually.
Point of clarification, on the boards that we are not on, are we welcome to come in and listen and, okay?
Encouraged.
Okay, lovely. I just wanna make sure. And then if I am ever available, I'll be there. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, um, Mr. Attorney, do you have a reason for executive session?
Yes, and uh thank you, Mayor. Since council voted to convene an executive session. Um, if mayor wants to adjourn, I think the open portion of this meeting having concluded, then we can. Uh, stop the broadcast and start the executive session recording.
It is eight thirty-two and I adjourn the post-meeting and start an executive session.